Called to order the Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, April 18th, 2019. Please stand and join us in pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Harlecker, will you please call a roll?
Yes, Commissioner Knoblock?
Here.
Commissioner Heikala?
Here.
Commissioner Bradley?
Here.
Commissioner Geisler?
Here.
Commissioner Casey?
Here.
Chair Schwartz?
Here.
Commissioner Schmalki is absent tonight's meeting.
Our first order of business this evening is to adopt our agenda. Motion by Heikala, second by Geisler. Any discussion? Carry on, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Agenda's been adopted. Now we will have the approval of our minutes from our March 21st, 2019 meeting.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the minutes.
Set. Motion by Casey, second by Knoblock. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Minutes are approved with one abstention, Commissioner Heikala. Next, we'll move on to our old business, planning cases 19-4 preliminary plat and 19-5 preliminary plat and final site plan for 176 unit apartment at Springbrook Drive and 94th Avenue. Real estate equities, Mr. Harlecker.
Yeah, Chair and Commissioners, the applicant is in the process, they are revising their plans, and they requested that the NMB postpone to the May meeting. So staff is recommending that the Chair open the public hearing, take any public comment, and then continue with to the May meeting.
All right, thank you. This time I will open a public hearing in planning cases 19-4 and 19-5, preliminary plat and preliminary and final site plan. Anyone wishing to speak to either of these cases this evening? Anyone wish to speak on these cases? Seeing none, we will then continue the public hearing until our May 16th meeting. And we need official motions on each separately to...
I would do separately, Chair.
Continue.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Casey?
In planning case 19-4, I move that we, having opened the public hearing, let it remain open until the May 16th, 2019 meeting.
Second. Motion by Casey, second by Knoblock. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Cases continued to our next month's meeting. And then for 19-5?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Casey?
Likewise, in planning case 19-5, I move that we, having opened the public hearing, let it remain open until the May 16th, 2019 meeting.
Second. Motion by Casey, second by Knoblock. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That case is continued. Next, under new business, we have planning case 19-9, a site plan for an office warehouse at 11201 Exion Street, JSN Properties. Mr. Harlecker.
Yes, Chair and Commissioners, this is a request for 85,500 square foot office warehouse. Property is located here, at the end of Exion Street. About 9.25 acres, railroad tracks on the east, Highway 10, warehouse building to the north, and Holland Trucking is in this area here. And there's a railroad spur that serves the warehouse to the north, right through here, a wetland down in this area, and a creek that traverses the site in this area here. Access will be off of the end of Exion Street. Here's the site plan. This is the building here. The loading doors, loading area will be on the north side, with entrances to the tenant spaces on the west, southwest, and south sides. This is the main access coming in off of Exion. Trucks can go in here and do their thing, and then come back out, so the vehicle traffic is separated from the truck traffic. There is a sewer easement that cuts across the site in this location here. What is kind of unique with this project, and it's undergoing review by the watershed engineering department, is taking that creek and moving it to the north, this location here, that opens up this area for parking. Then it will funnel over to this basin here, and then go out the way it currently does. Stormwater ponds, this location here, and here. Parking, vehicle parking is along here, the south and west sides. 116 spaces are proposed. You can see from here, part of their driveway is on Track D, which is a piece that was established when this area went through the registered land survey, and that created these two lots. Track D was set up to accommodate Exion Street, but as you can see, it terminates here in the cul-de-sac, and this is really excess property. So the applicant is working with the city to acquire that portion here of Track D, so they can accommodate their driveway at the proposed location. Here's the grading plan. If you can see, this is the area where the creek has been relocated. They are working with the adjacent property to the north to either require an easement to accommodate that, or possibly do a lot split to actually acquire that piece of property. There's a stormwater basin here, here, and here, and this here is the wetland. Here's the landscaping plan. So they've got overstory trees, evergreens, and ornamentals along the driveway coming in, around ponds, here, here, and here. The pond also have shrubs that are planted around it to give it a more natural feeling. And they've got evergreen trees at the end of the parking lot here, and here, and then along the south property line, as well as on the landscape islands and peninsulas in the parking lot. Foundation plantings provided around the west, southwest, and south sides of the building. Here's the building elevations. They are precast panels with a mix of white, gray, and a darker gray with a simulated wood material above the entrances. You can see there's breaks in the roofline and the parapets to break up the building. This is the south elevation. The tenant entrances all have canopies over them. This is the southwest corner of the building. As you can see, it's kind of cut off or camfert here, it kind of provides an accent point on the building facing the highway. That's got a separate entrance. Then there's also an entrance on the west side of the building. The north side here are the loading bays and the service areas for the building. With that, I'll answer any questions. Staff is recommending approval of the site plan, with the conditions that it comply with Title 11, all engineering comments be addressed, all MNDOT comments be addressed, park dedication is due for this property in the amount of $31,200 to be paid prior to releasing the building permit. The trash enclosure be constructed of masonry material compatible with the building and include a durable gate. Site security agreement be entered into with the city, and the ground sign and wall signs must comply with the sign code and require separate sign permits. The applicant is in the audience tonight to give a brief presentation also.
All right, thank you, Mr. Harlecker. Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Harlecker?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Geisler?
Mr. Harlecker, could you elaborate on what the site security agreement is, and then also, is the city amenable to working with the applicant for the sale of that Track D?
Second one first, yes, we are, they have been working with the engineering department. We had a staff discussion about that, and it really is excess property that the city doesn't need, so we'll be working with them on the proper mechanism to transfer the property to them. As far as the site security agreement, what that does, it sets parameters for installing site improvements, primarily landscaping, but includes curb and gutter paving. And what that does, it sets the dates as to when that has to be improved. There's a site security that's part of that, and that's held until one year after the site's been complete to make sure that all the landscaping survives.
Thank you.
Anything else for Mr. Harlecker at this time?
Chair Schwartz, I have...
Mr. Knoblock?
Do you know the five, two questions? First is anticipated, if approved, construction start and completion?
No.
Okay.
Typically, like most builders, they'd like to get start tomorrow, so I'm anticipating a summer start on it, as far as the completion goes. I'm not sure how long that will take, usually several months.
Understandable.
There's quite a bit of work that's involved with the site, prepping the site.
The second and final question I have is, is there an estimate on the Coon Rapids watershed decision or feedback from their review?
I'll let the applicant speak to that. I believe they've been working with the watershed even before they submitted a formal application, so the watershed is aware of their proposal to relocate the ditch or creek.
And I have a Part B to that second question. And this is actually maybe more directed towards you. In regards to the creek and the water flow, isn't there, right by the rails, just south, southwest of there, isn't there a part of the creek that goes underneath Highway 10 to the south side of 10?
Yep.
From that area?
Yep.
Okay, I just want to confirm, because I believe there's underground and there's also stream, so that's why I asked specifically about a decision from the Coon Rapids watershed.
Yep, okay.
All right, thank you.
Chair Schwartz? Mr. Harlecker?
Talking with the creek, I would recommend that Condition 8 be included, that the applicant obtain either an easement or the property to accommodate the relocation of the creek under the property to the north.
All right. And petitioner'd like to make a presentation? Please come to the microphone. Give your name and address. For the record, please.
John McCas, 2993 BB Parkway in Maplewood, Minnesota. I'm from Pope Architects. They were supposed to be the contractor here, he would maybe know a little bit more about the watershed questions and that sort of thing. As far as construction, to sort of go to that question, my understanding is that we intend to submit for a permit pretty much right after City Council meets, assuming approval, or hoping for approval, that permit drawings will be ready, so construction will start very soon. I brought material pallets, assume I can approach and give you those?
That'd be fine.
So we've got two sets here. These are the stains, three-color stains, and the metal panel, the black metal panel is the canopies, and the window frames will also be painted black. And the wood look material is... That product there is called Longboard. We talked about potentially actual wood, but with the south-facing facade of the building, south and southwest, we felt that a more durable, longer-lasting material, so wood look, but of an aluminum and high-quality paint. The undersides of the canopy will also be that, so the black will come down the face, return about six inches, and then the underside of the canopy will also be that wood material. It's a woodware.
The wood material?
The wood-like material, the aluminum wood material, yep.
We're finding that that sort of material, and that, and more about polycarbonate form, is becoming very common use in buildings, because of its durability and the simulated wood design.
And again, we're proposing a concrete stain as opposed to paint. It's becoming much more popular with the building owners, it lasts a lot longer before it has to be updated, repainted, restained, or whatever you want to call it. The panels are Fabcon precast, not sure if you're familiar with those, but they're reversed panels, so it makes a much cleaner, smoother appearance. There aren't as many joints to look at, it's cleaner, smoother, will take the paint better. So it's becoming also very common in the Twin Cities area to do the panels in that form.
Mr. Harlecker, for the audience's sake, I guess, more than anything, could you show the renditions of the facings of the building?
They're currently up on, if they're on your monitor or not. This is, again, this is, the top one is the south face, facing the wetland area with tenant entrances. The middle one here is the southwest corner, that's kind of cut off, with an entrance there. And then this one here is on the west side. This side here is a side facing the railroad tracks. And then on the bottom is the north side of the building where the loading doors are.
And do you have the perspectives?
I do not have them in.
All right.
Chair Schwartz, have a follow-up question?
Commissioner Knoblock?
Do we have anticipated, because it's going to be right up against Highway 10, in comparison to Holland and the other warehouse, what kind of elevation are we looking at for this warehouse? Office warehouse?
Commissioner Knoblock, I assume it's probably fairly similar to what Holland is. They're both one-story warehouse-style buildings.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair? Commissioner Geisler?
The applicant. The typical use of this building, who would be your regular tenant, or who would be occupying, generally speaking?
It's not meant for distribution, it's, was kind of intended for smaller occupants, for an 85,000 square foot building, they were looking at maybe four tenants, obviously hoping for larger, but kind of the market, from my understanding, the market in this area is a little bit for smaller, so small office area, and then some warehousing, but not like intense distribution, is not the intent.
So, but it is designed to be a multi-tenant building?
It is designed for multi-tenant, yes.
Okay, and then with that, I would lead into my second question. I understand that building requires only five handicap stalls with the space you have here, however, you have three entrances. Would you be amenable to having two at every entrance, just from an ADA perspective, because from thinking about those tenants in that middle space, you know, if you want to have kind of equal access across?
Yeah, I'm not sure what we're showing now, there should be at least one at each.
There is one at everyone, you have two at the Chamford entrance, and you have two at the Far East entrance, and then in that center entrance, there's only one located there? Would it be possible to add a second one in there, just so that there's two at every door?
Yeah, I don't think that would be any kind of an issue. We should have adequate parking on the site.
We have access parking.
Yeah, it seems like you have access parking spaces, it doesn't seem like, and just be, you know, that central tenant, you'd want to make sure they have kind of the same deal as everyone else, I would hope for. Okay, that's the rest of our questions, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Casey?
I wanted to know, so you're saying there will be like four tenants, you visualize, is that warehouse space that occupies the rest of the building, is that for them, or what are the trucks going to be delivering, or you said they won't be distributing too much, but there's going to be truck traffic, is that...
There will be truck traffic, I guess, my point was that it's not a high-volume warehouse, it's not going to be like an Amazon or something like that, it's much more likely smaller. There's really no way to know what exactly is going to go in there, but it would be smaller manufacturers, so I don't anticipate there'd be a high-volume trucking. It's not a very deep building, we're not really putting in a lot of doors, we're pretty much providing two doors per tenant, you know, anticipated four tenants and two doors per each, which isn't extreme.
But the warehouse space would be for them?
Yes.
It wouldn't be independent of...
Correct.
Coming in from outside?
Right, the idea would be users that have an office need and a warehouse, or manufacturing need at the same time.
Okay. And Mr. Harlecker, just for clarity, right now, you mentioned that eighth condition, and what was that again? How would you phrase that?
Clear creek watershed easement.
Commissioner, what that was intended to do is, in order to put this on the adjacent property, one of two things have to happen. Either they have to get an easement from the adjacent property owner to do that, or else they can do a lot split and actually transfer that piece of property to the applicant. Either way works.
You're not talking about...
It's my understanding that they have it in discussions with the property owner, and the property owner is amenable to that. They did sign off on this application indicating that they were okay with what's being proposed.
Okay, and you're talking to the portion of land to the north, not Track D?
Correct.
Track D's out of the picture, okay. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner, any other questions for the petitioner? All right, thank you. All right, we do need to have a public hearing on this matter, so at this time I will open a public hearing in planning case 19-9, site plan for an office warehouse at 11201 Exion Street, JSN Properties. Anyone present wish to speak at this public hearing? Please come up to the microphone, give your name and address. Limit your comments to five minutes, please.
My name's Adam Gillingbach, and I live on the opposite side of the railroad tracks, and...
And your address, sir?
1132 109th Northwest, Coon Rapids.
Thank you.
And for years now, you guys, you had the Bruyell Warehouse put in, and that was kind of some kind of a noise going on from them through all night, where I have to sit there and sleep through the night going through that. Now, you know, that spur line that is going through there, that creates a lot of trouble for all my neighbors on that side of the property, because of the vibrations going through there. Now you're going to have this kind of a building, you know, it's going to be an awful sight for I have to sit there and look to my backyard to see this building. Now, I see, I heard that the Bruyell Warehouse was totally empty at one time. Where I used to, where I work at right now, they used to rent that building, no longer renting it, because they found another place. I don't see why they can't, you know, outfit that one as a cheaper price, as, you know, to get that, you know, and they can fix it up and get rid of that spur line, because it's causing, you know, pictures and stuff like that on my wall falling off the ground. You can hear the windmills rattling at the time, you know, when the trains go through there, because of that spur line. And now, you got to sit there and deal with that, and the lights that they're going to come off of that, and the noise, more noise coming off of that, too, and then plus that freeway, you guys ended that block coming down, you know, the wall that comes all the way down through Highway 10, ended at a certain point, where it could have brought it all the way down, you know, across, and maybe, you know, shield us from that type of noise going on. But, you know, I don't see that, you know, if you can have that Bruyell Warehouse outfitted to where these go, it would work for them as well, you know, getting rid of the noise from my backyard. I don't want to see a building in my backyard.
Could you show us on this map approximately where your house is?
Yep.
Right where the arrow is.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anyone else present wish...
I was going to say that, you know, some of my neighbors...
Come back to the microphone if you need to continue to speak, sir.
Some of my neighbors can't make it here, because they have to work two jobs all the way down, you know, in my neighborhood, and you heard about this, you know, and before that, you know, when the Unheiser Bush bought that building, they set that line up to side where it was never going to be used, it was just going to be left vacant, is what I was told. But now that they, you know, they left, you know, it's like now it's up in the wind on that piece of property. You know, animals and stuff, deer and everything go in there, and we have wild turkeys and stuff like that go through there, we have owls, we have, you know, eagles come through there, you know, they kind of nest, not nest, but, you know, they hunt in that area. It's just like the eagles nest up there on Highway 10, have you ever seen it? It's right there, you know, where all that new buildings and stuff, where it's that new construction and everything going on up by Highway 10 and Hanson right there, it's supposed to be a hotel or something like that.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else wish to speak at the public hearing? Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. And I guess a question for the petitioner, if he would know. Do you have any idea what the hours of operation of this facility would be?
I don't know.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Heikala?
I'm wondering, Mr. Harlecker, if the lights, the lighting around the facility has been thoroughly vetted, so that it won't have an issue, the neighbors won't have an issue with lights?
Yeah, when they, Commissioner Heikala, when they submit for building permit, the city code requires that lighting at the property lines be no greater than three-foot candles. So they, when they submit their building permit, typically what they use are, they're called cutoff lights, so they direct the light into the site, and that way they really diminish the amount of light at the property lines. But maximum allowed by city code is three-foot candles.
Thank you.
And Mr. Harlecker, if the person that spoke at the public hearing is correct about the spur line, if the old Budweiser building is vacant, there would be no traffic, rail traffic on the spur off of the line, correct?
Correct, I think most of the railroad traffic is coming off the main line.
Right off the main line, which we have no control over anyway.
Yeah.
Sorry, sir, the public hearing is over. Commissioner, thoughts?
Chair Schwartz, I have a question.
Commissioner Knoblock?
Actually, it's not really a question, it's more of a statement. This office warehouse, a warehouse, office warehouse, the question that percolates with me is, what will be the capacity of tenants? Because that will dictate a lot of traffic, and if it's smaller tenants, I have the feeling that it's going to be like the issue that we've had to deal with, you know, with adrenaline and tile company facing Highway 10. With all the traffic that's at that site, it's part of Stein, not Steinway, the manufacturer delta, where they have multiple buildings, and they lease out some of their buildings, sublease. And then, we don't have, we have a lot of temporary signs that should be more, should be following the sign permits. See, part of it is, that is the end result, but my greater concern is the volume of tenants, the potential for this site. Because of the access and the design of the thing, of the plot, it seems feasible. But if we're looking at a higher... But if we're looking at a higher density of tenants potentially using this facility, then I think it may start to become an issue. And that's, that's my statement slash question.
Thank you.
For the commission.
Thank you. And Commissioner, anyone else?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
So, Mr. Harlecker, back on that location map, that brewery building, how long has that been vacant? Yesteme?
Six, eight years. There's been tenants that have come and gone.
I see.
But Budweiser's been out of there for quite some time.
Okay.
And that was recently purchased by a local company, and they'll be using that building as warehouse space.
Strictly warehouse space?
I believe so. I can't quote me on that.
Yeah. So we don't know if they'd be using the spur of the railroad or not?
Um, I couldn't say for certain. Very few companies nowadays need railroad spurs. They like to keep them in place because they have them, and even if they're not using them, they're not hurting anybody. When you get rid of them, they're difficult to replace.
And this one is not in use, you're saying?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Heitler.
Mr. Harlecker, I'm looking at this memo to you from Mark Anson, and there's a third bullet from the bottom where it says, "Certain city details shown on plan sheets C eight and C nine may not be current. Visit the city website to download the most current city standard plate details."
Okay.
Is that, so everything that we're looking at here, the plan is now current?
I don't believe they've changed it since that comment. That's really, it's not a significant comment. They just used the wrong detail on their detailed plans, and they'll use the correct ones when they do submit for building permit.
And Mr. Geisler, you had a question?
Yes, Mr. Harlecker, as far as the spur maintenance goes, is that properties, is that spur property held by BNSF, or is that part of this property?
I'm not, it's not part of this property.
Okay.
I believe it's an easement to provide access to the building to the north.
So the maintenance on the far side of that spur is required by the tenant as far as that field space goes?
I would say it's probably required by the property owner. They're the owner of the property, and the property of the north has the easement of the tracks. I'm just speculating on this. But typically what they have is, now the property owner to the north is responsible for the spur line, and then typically the property owner is required for maintenance in the area outside of those improvements. Just like if there's a power line easement over somebody's property, the property owner is responsible for keeping the grass cut.
Sure. And so I guess a second extension from that question would be, how would the applicant be accessing that side over the spurs for that equipment?
Over the spurs.
So is there plans to have some level of gravel grading or something so you can get along more over those railroad tracks?
At this point, no.
Okay. Thank you.
And Commissioner, anyone have anything else or willing to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve planning case nineteen-nine. Nineteen-nine, excuse me, nineteen-nine, with the following stipulations, that it complies with Title XI, that all engineering comments be addressed, that all MINDOT comments be addressed, that a park dedication fee in the amount of $31,200 be paid prior to releasing the building permit, that the trash enclosure be constructed of masonry material compatible with the building and included a durable gate, that a site security agreement be entered into with the city, that a ground sign and wall signs must comply with sign code and separate sign permits, that the applicant obtain a property, obtain the property or an easement to the property to the north of this segment to relocate the creek, that the applicant also place a total of six handicaps, two in front of every stall within the building.
Every entrance.
Every entrance, excuse me, yes.
And is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second, or by Casey. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. This is a decision by the planning commission and can be appealed to the city council within ten business days. Good luck. All right, next we have planning cases nineteen-eight and nineteen-seven, preliminary plat and a site plan conditional use permit for three zero two one, one hundred and twenty-fourth Avenue Metro Storage. Mr. Harlecker.
Yeah, Chair and Commissioners, let's take the preliminary plat first. What is being proposed is to split this lot here. It's located south of Main Street, north of one hundred and twenty-fourth, and west of the Highway ten entrance ramp. This is Menards across the street, medical office building, twin homes, and single-family residential. What they're proposing to do is to take this piece of property here, six point three eight acres, and split it into two lots and an outlot, something like this. The next application, the site plan, will be placed on Lot One. Lot Two, at this point in time, is vacant or will be vacant. And then they've got an outlot here. The stormwater pond for these two properties is located in about this location here. Lot One, which is the site of the proposed indoor storage facility, it's two point seven three acres. It meets the dimensional requirements of the general commercial district, which is what this property is owned. And Lot Two, this lot here, staff is recommending as part of the plat that this outlot be combined with Lot Two. Typically, we try to make outlots, get rid of them and combine with regular lots because outlots, a lot of times, tend to go tax forfeit, and then they call it issues. Since this lot here also houses the stormwater basin for these two lots, city staff is recommending that Lot Two also include Outlet A and a little piece down here that's labeled as Outlet B. So all this would be one lot. Park dedication is due for this property here, an amount of $5,000 per acre. You see, it's got the appropriate easements on the property lines, as well as a utility easement across this point here. What will go in here will be the stormwater pipe that takes the water from this site over to the drainage pond here. And this easement here, you can see where the arrows go, that's the area that is encompassed by the drainage pond. With that, staff is recommending that the planning commission move to recommend approval of the preliminary plat for Riverdale Commons Third Edition, with the conditions that compliance with Title XI, city code, park dedication, the amount of $5,000 per acre is due prior to releasing the plat for recording. All comments of the city engineer be addressed, and all comments from Anoka County and MINDOT are addressed. Main Street to the north is the county highway, and then it's got frontage on Highway ten right away also.
Mr. Harlecker. Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Harlecker?
Oh, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
Mr. Harlecker, so you're looking at a three point six five for that second portion, three point six five acres, but the one point four four is not buildable? Is it, it's just the storm basin?
Correct.
Is that correct? To the right, so, but it's taxable, so it's included in the, that's what you'd like to see done?
Well, yeah, we want to see it so it just doesn't, you know, really, really fall away and they become a maintenance issue. And then you got to try to track down who's responsible if something goes wrong. We try to, like you say, we try to avoid them for administrative purposes.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
So, Mr. Harlecker, with the inclusion of that, that would make this property that we're talking about where the storage facility will go will not, will no longer bear the taxes for the drainage and the drainage space that it would be on the outlots, is that correct? Because that would be part of now Lot Two?
Wouldn't that?
So if Outlet A and Outlet B are combined with Lot Two there?
Yep.
Lot Two will then bear the property tax for both outlots, is that correct?
If it becomes part of Lot Two, I guess I would defer assessment questions and taxes questions to the assessor's office. So I'm not sure how the taxes would play out for this, since this part here is a stormwater pond.
Petitioner apparently has some kind of an answer. Come to the microphone, state your name, please.
Bob Heilmann, Metro Storage, Lake Forest. Currently, the parcels have, are of two tax designations, I believe, Lot One and Two.
This is one lot.
That's one lot.
And then there's a couple different.
We call it the dog leg pieces are all previous Minnesota DOT pieces that are unusable. They're lowland. So our anticipation is by creating the two lots, our lot, which is Lot One, Lot Two, which would be a future lot for a future tenant or entity of some type, there would be tax parcel one, tax parcel two, and a combined, so for that, that other parcel or a combination of parcels would be its own tax piece, and the sharing would be between Lots One and Two, because we both use the storm drainage on that parcel. We still want to maintain it as an outlot because there is a tax advantage to it being an outlot. We would have an operation and maintenance agreement with the city for maintenance and usage of that storm system on that outlot. So it's not going to go, fall off a tax record. It has to be used, it has to be paid for for us to be able to use that stormwater system on that outlot. But there is a tax advantage to it being an outlot.
Okay. Thank you.
And Commissioner, any other questions, Mr. Harlecker?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
So, Mr. Harlecker, there's currently on that slight curve of Crooked Lake where it comes in to meet one hundred and twenty-fourth, three houses, is that right? It seemed to me that.
Down here? Or here?
Yeah, right in there where you are now.
Yeah, there's three twin homes there.
Three twin homes. Any, any other development can be put in there? I mean, as far as residential, is there room?
In here?
Yeah.
No, not without tearing, acquiring all the properties and then tearing them down and.
Okay. But no more lots for homes or anything?
No.
In there? Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions at this time?
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Knoblauch.
The only follow-up question I'd want to ask is, I'm familiar with that area of one hundred and twenty-fourth Avenue Northwest there, and with Sister Kenny Rehab Building right next door to this west, to this proposed development. My only concern is traffic flow. Has there been any estimation on volume of traffic customers in regards to this?
Not as part of the preliminary plat, no.
No. Yeah, I'm, maybe I added myself of the other client. All right, thanks.
All right, excuse me, we need a public hearing on this matter. So I will open a public hearing in planning case nineteen-eight, preliminary plat, Riverdale Corners Third Edition, three zero two one, one hundred and twenty-fourth Avenue Metro Storage. Anyone present wish to speak at this public hearing?
I do.
Come to the microphone, please. State your name and give your address for the record, and limit your comments to five minutes. Thank you.
My name's Diane Gilgenbach. I live at eleven thirty-two hundred and ninth. It's going to be right in our backyard. It's going to be an eyesore. Are we, am I on the right one?
No.
No, that case has already been handled.
Well, that's not fair. I couldn't get off from work until now.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
Petitioners are out in the lobby. I could direct you there.
Anyone present wish to speak on this case? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing. Commissioner, any comments or someone willing to make a motion on the preliminary plat?
Mr. Chair, one final question.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Harlecker, as the recommendation stands, it currently leaves the Outlet A and Outlet B as outlots, is that correct?
Correct. Staff would recommend that that be added as a condition number five.
Thank you very much.
Chair.
Commissioner Bradley.
Mr. Harlecker, the petitioners are proposing a maintenance agreement with the city with regard to the outlots. Would that satisfy the city's concern with ongoing maintenance and control of the outlots?
Commissioner Bradley, I believe the maintenance agreement is just for the pond, correct? That's my understanding. We haven't seen anything yet.
I haven't seen one yet, but.
But typically, that's what they're for, is for the pond area.
And, Mr. Harlecker, if the petitioners were willing to expand that maintenance agreement to cover the outlots, preservation, maintenance, and conditions the city would deem necessary, would that satisfy, do you believe, the city?
I haven't seen the agreement, so I hesitate to comment on something I haven't seen. But typically, we, outlots are notoriously headaches for municipalities. We see them go tax forfeit all the time, a third entity comes up and owns, buys it, and it causes difficult situations.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Knoblauch.
I propose that in planning case nineteen-eight, for the preliminary plat for the Riverdale Corners Third Edition, one hundred and twenty-fourth Avenue Metro Storage, that, that be approved.
Is there a second?
May I inquire, are you including the amendments as proposed by the city, one through four, or are you going to add number five as requested by the city?
Is number five being added for nineteen-eight?
I would second that statement.
Sure.
Motion by Knoblauch, second by Brady. Any further discussion?
I'm not clear on this one. Are we including item, or the, the Mr. Harlecker's recommendation in this plating or not? recommendation in this plating or not?
Yes, number 5.
There is a number 5, and how does it read, Mr. Harlecker?
The language you'd like...
There's a number 5 condition that's going in on this?
That was staff's recommendation for combining the outlot with Lot 2.
So, Outlot A and B, finish the sentence for me.
Combine outlots A and B with Lot 2.
Okay.
And that's the understanding, both the motion and, and second?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Commissioner Geisler opposed. This is a recommendation by the planning commission and be heard by the city council at the May 7th meeting. Next, we have Planning Case 19-7, the site plan, conditional use permit for self-storage building at 3021 124th Avenue, Mr. Harlecker.
Yes, Chair and Commissioners, um, this proposal is going on this lot here, which is Lot 1 of the preliminary plat, um, you just considered, uh, what it is, it's a three-story indoor self-storage facility, approximately 138,000 square feet, um, uh, there's no outdoor storage proposed on this facility, all activity will be inside the building, um, there's two access points off of 124th, no access off of Main Street. Customers can come in here, um, there's an entrance here to get inside the building, there's 11 parking stalls, and then a drive aisle, um, where they can load and unload, and then exit on the north side, circle around the building, and then go back out onto 124th. Um, if you're just going to use the office space, um, you could go here, park in front, or if you want to unload out in the parking lot and go in one of the service doors and then up, um, if there's parking spaces for that also, uh, right here. There are 13 parking spaces, um, on the exterior, 11 spaces, uh, inside the building. City code does not have a parking requirement for a self-storage facility, um, the city recently approved a similar facility, um, with 12 parking spaces and two interior loading bays. Um, we went through the access into the site, um, the grading plan, um, this is the large stormwater basin, um, over behind the twin homes, and there are two smaller stormwater basins along 124th, here and here, and this is a stormwater pipe that carries stormwater across, uh, this lot here, Lot 2, and into the basin. When this lot is developed, it'll have its own stormwater management system that will also utilize, uh, the stormwater pond also, it's being sized to accommodate both sites. Landscape plan, um, along the north here on Main Street, uh, there are four existing, uh, overstory trees along the street, the applicant will be adding, uh, a row hedge, um, along the, uh, the right of way here. On the east side, they're proposing evergreen trees up front here, um, where the space narrows down, they've got, um, shrubs proposed, then where it widens out down here again, they've got some ornamental trees. Out front, along 124th, they've got overstory trees proposed in front of the ponds, or the stormwater basins, and then behind the, the basins, they're proposing, uh, some more shrubs, um, some more, typically, they're, they're larger shrubs like dogwoods, uh, chokeberries, they give it a more natural feel. And then along the east property line, they've got a mix of overstory, ornamental trees, overstory, and then pine trees with shrubs interspersed, uh, along down here. On the pond over here, they've got, uh, shrubs and trees along the south barn, it's got cut off here, but this pattern extends to here, and then along the north property line also. Staff is recommending, uh, as a condition, that they add, um, extra, uh, shrubs along here to fill it in and give it a more, uh, natural feel. On the site plan, there is a trash enclosure proposed here, um, staff is recommending that that either be moved over here to the east side in a less conspicuous spot, or else moved inside, and, um, uh, trash be taken care of inside the building. Building elevations, um, the applicant is proposing a mix, um, it's a, uh, precast panel, and the finish on the panels are a mix of, uh, brick, two-tone brick, and, um, a limestone. This is the south elevation, uh, facing, uh, 124th, with the door coming in, and the finish with the brick up top, and the limestone on the bottom. This is the northeast corner, um, with glass windows, and then the office area down below. As you can see, there's no exterior, uh, loading areas, everything is done inside. This is the artist rendering of that facility. Since the packet went out, uh, the applicant has asked, um, that the planning commission and staff, uh, consider a, a modification to the exterior layout, the exterior materials on here, same materials, um, just different placement of those materials. What they're proposing is instead of having the limestone on the bottom, um, they're proposing to have it up top with the, uh, light brick as a base on the bottom, and then, uh, eliminate the stone in this area here, and in this area here, and just make it brick. This is what, uh, this is the artist's rendering of that alternative elevation. Essentially, what they did is they, they flip-flopped the limestone, uh, with the, uh, with the brick. I think staff is fine, uh, with this proposed modification. Um, with the windows, it gives kind of a, a common, or a column, or, or pelister look to the, where the windows are. Where in this elevation, it was more of a picture frame type of appearance around the windows with, uh, with a stone underneath, um, and this gives it a more finished look all the way down. With that, uh, staff is recommending, uh, the planning commission, uh, recommend approval, or it's not a recommendation, it's, it's an approval of the, uh, conditional use permit and, uh, site plan for this facility, uh, with the conditions, uh, outlined in the staff report.
Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Harlecker at this time?
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Knoblauch.
Uh, two questions, um, hours of operation, and second, uh, anticipated, uh, traffic flow. It's just the two, the two entrances?
Correct.
To the site, uh, off of 124th?
Um, I'll let the applicant go into details of the hours of operation and the traffic. Typically, self-storage facilities are low generators for traffic, um, it's how it gets a commercial site where they've got, um, vehicles coming, uh, all the time. Um, I believe the, uh, hours of operation are somewhere along the lines of 6:00 in the morning till 10:00 at night, um, I believe they can specify at that.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
Um, Mr. Harlecker, do you know if those driveways, are they going to be one in and one out? Will they be labeled as such?
Well, uh...
Or be open?
Commissioner Casey, they are set up to be two-way, um, they're wide enough to accommodate two-way traffic.
Okay.
Um, I suspect this one here will probably be, uh, generate more two-way traffic with cars, if they're down here, coming out and going this way, whereas this site here, um, will probably be, uh, generate more one-way traffic out, uh, but can accommodate two-way traffic.
Okay.
And commission, any other questions at this time? Petitioner like to make a presentation?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, my name is Quinn Hudson, I'm a principal with CNH Architects, uh, out of Apple Valley, uh, the applicant and, so, I want to, you are here as well with me tonight to answer any other additional questions. Um, in general, I'll keep it, uh, short, we do have some materials we can show, uh, of the actual, uh, uh, brick and, and precast, uh, that we're looking at for the building, um, but in general, we've, uh, been pleased working with, uh, the city staff and are, uh, comfortable with the, uh, conditions, other than the conversation we had earlier about the outlot, but, uh, we're comfortable with all the, uh, uh, conditions that we're looking at for this, uh, side of it. At this time, maybe I'll, uh, show you some of the, uh, pro, uh, materials, and then we can bring the, uh, applicant up to answer some of the detailed questions he had about operations.
I'd be fine, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, there you go. So, these are the two bricks that we're talking about, uh, so, the light and the dark, uh, they're shown in the rendering, that is the, uh, precast panel, the limestone, uh, type of look with the, uh, roofs going, including the big large block format elements. And, uh, Meyer really had a little bit of accent, prefinished metal around the windows, uh, to bring on a little bit of gray towards this one.
The only question I have is, is the limestone, the white, will be flip-flopped, like you said, to the bottom and the dark to the top, is that correct?
Right, white, uh, our preference, and I, I do apologize that we came in late with that, and we were developing, we realized that this was just a more pleasant, stronger feeling at the base, you know, and, uh, as, uh, Harlecker mentioned, it just, I think is a better, uh, application option.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you have, uh, first of all, maybe have, uh, Bob respond to the, uh, questions of hours and traffic, and then any other questions you might have.
Thank you.
So quickly, uh, on hours, the proposed hours of operation, um, it's really broken down into two pieces, we have a, it is a staffed location, obviously, we have a, a property manager, um, at the facility from 9:00, 9:30 a.m. till 6:00 p.m. at night, uh, Monday through Friday, um, and, uh, I didn't show the other, it, it's shorter on the weekends, typically, it's on a Saturday, it's something like, uh, 9:00 till 5:00, and Sunday, it's 9:00 till 3:00, I think, is when the property manager is there. Now, every customer, uh, or tenant of the building has a proprietary PIN number, so access hours, which are controlled automatically by the system, access is from 6:00 a.m. till 10:00 p.m. at night. So you'll have some hours where the property manager will not be there. After that, the system is shut down and nobody can access the building at that point in time, so, those are the others.
Maybe you could elaborate also on the security measures?
Sure. So, what we have is, um, a security system that basically monitors all aspects of the public property, any public spaces in the building are monitored, so we can monitor access both onsite as well as offsite, uh, through our system as well. Um, really, what we feel, um, is that we train our property managers very well, so they're our first line, if you will, of security, they are dealing with customers every day on a daily basis, they are doing walkthroughs of the facility twice a day, um, so they are in continual monitoring of what is happening, both inside and outside the facility. Um, let me touch on the traffic, um, as Scott had mentioned, these are probably one of the lowest, uh, generators of traffic, um, that the, um, uh, I think it's called the I T E manual for traffic engineers, um, there's case studies in there for, um, uh, self-storage of different types, but this generation, um, based on this type and size of facility, which is really kind of our average-sized facility, uh, I would suspect that, um, based on this size, we're probably between 45 and 55 trip generations per hour at a max, and that would be a Saturday morning, um, and that means a trip is one inbound movement, and, so that's one movement, so the outbound is one as well, so that's really about 25 people at the max hour, uh, for an hour, so, that would be a Saturday morning, typically, it's a lot less.
One question, I didn't catch your full name and title, please?
Sure, Bob Heilmann, Vice President of Development, Metro Storage.
Thank you.
Do you have a list of prohibited items that can be stored at your facility?
We do, our lease is very clear on what cannot be stored in the facility as far as hazardous materials, uh, delineates, uh, flammable, explosives, ammunition, all kinds of different things that are, uh, very clearly, uh, delineated in the lease as to what you cannot store in the facility.
Would vehicles be allowed to be stored if they did not contain gasoline?
Uh, typically, yes, and we don't, uh, most facilities, we don't require them to be drained, but it's similar to parking in your garage at home, um, but typically, they're a classic car, um, but in this, in this case, we eliminated our outside access units around the building that we would typically have, so in this type of facility, we would not anticipate any vehicle storage based on the access, we have a drive-through facility here, but you're not going to be able to get vehicles in to these units that are along that drive, so I would expect that we're not going to have vehicle storage here.
Motorcycles, ATVs?
Possibly.
And they're, they would be allowed?
Typically, yes.
And that wouldn't come, come under your combustible explosive materials at all?
Uh, typically, no, because they are within the vehicle in a sealed system that is designed not to cause issues.
Thank you.
Would there be a size, is it large enough to, for a boat and motor?
Not in this, not with the arrangement that we have here, again, we don't have access, outside access units, so we would not, unless it's something very small, like a rowboat or something, that you could fit into a unit.
Hi, uh, follow-up, uh, Chair Schwartz, um, the question is, would, will there be allowed, will all storage be within the facility, or will, uh, like, outside parking be considered as rentable storage space?
We are not proposing any outdoor storage.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
So you have elevator access, I take it, your three floors high?
Yes, we'd have two elevators.
Okay, and there, um, so what are the size of your units, then?
So they vary, um, we don't have a full unit plan yet, but based on the rentable square footage being around 95,000 square feet, my guess is we have about 950 units in the building, and they vary anywhere from a 5 by 5 unit, so it's 5 foot by 5 foot by roughly 8 foot high, with a door on it, all the way up to, I believe, and we'll have to look at it now without the outside units, but it's probably, the biggest unit would be a 10-foot wide by 30-foot long unit on the inside of the building. So, we'd have a ratio, anywhere from the small size to the largest size, a breakdown, typically, our, our, our most average size is going to be a 10-foot by 10-foot unit, so we'll probably have the most of those, the bigger units are typically on the first floor, and they get smaller as you go up.
So 950 units, you said?
Is going to be, it'll be about that number, somewhere in there, probably between 900 and 1,000. Again, we haven't done the full unit mix yet, so...
Yeah, the interior, sure.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Geisler. So, I'd like to shift to the aesthetics of the building a little bit here, um, as far as the focal point of the entrance there, um, you know, I think we've seen a couple of these buildings around, i- is, is this typical? Is, is this typical of what you would do in a metro self-storage facility?
Yes, this has a lot of similarity to other metro self-storage units around the country, and they're in sixteen states, if I'm ever correct, but they're not absolutely identical. They do vary by region, but this front entry element is pretty typical of what we would be seeing.
Would you consider that a defining characteristic of the building, of metro self-storage, though, is to have this, this glass view like this with the units?
Of most storage buildings, for that matter, yes.
And I'll add, this looks almost exactly like the story over in Blaine, but also in Burnsville. So in the marketplace, we definitely try to keep the image very similar.
So it's, it would, a signature aesthetic, really, is what you would call it. So the building is identifiable based on this aesthetic?
Yeah.
Okay. And with that, in your narrative, you mentioned that, for the most part, your lights are going to be dark, dark sky compliant, et cetera. I'm assuming that's referencing the exterior lights, reaching less than one-foot candle at the property line, and city code illuminate says that it can be up to three-foot candles. Would you be willing to accept that it would be held to one-foot candle, knowing that the second and third-story lights would be right in the backyard of those duplex homes that are right across the street there?
Let me clarify, this view is facing Main Street.
Correct. Yes, the, the easterly side there of that building is almost a straight shot right into the back porch of some of those duplex homes that are, that are nearby off the plat.
East side.
So the east side facing those, okay. So you're, to summarize your question, you'd want the light level at the property line to be zero, is what you're saying?
Not zero, but you're stating that, for the most part, it would be at one-foot candle in your own personal narrative. Would you be willing to accept that lower level, because ordinance is higher than that? Would you be willing to accept that so that the properties are not impacted, either from exterior or interior lights?
Yes.
Okay.
And the, the plan that's submitted, you know, is what we're being held to in, in light levels, you know, based on the scientific software that calculates that, and we're about at one-foot candle at the edge of the pavement, and will be even less when we get to the property line.
Excellent. I know there has been concern at other facilities, and I've driven by some, that are maybe not metro self-storage, but similar storage facilities that are very bright, and I know there's some, some stipulations in this, and with those residential homes right there, and with Lot Two being undeveloped, there is no break in sight for those guys from, from your second and third story. You can't build a fence that high, you can't do anything to the front.
These lights are not placed at the top of the building, they're placed partially up, and they're positioned with a cutoff, as we mentioned earlier, so that the light does not shine in that direction at all.
For the exterior lights?
The exterior lights I'm talking about.
So the interior lights, though, you've got bright lime-yellow doors here with interior lighting that will be just shining right out there, and I guess my concern is that's a pretty big beacon to put in somebody's backyard there.
You're talking about the thin interior lights on that side?
Well, I think I could do something.
The easterly exposure.
I mean, because this, I mean, really, we're talking about, it's, it's a long way. You know, we could beef this up.
Chair, Commissioners, what the applicant is proposing to do is to increase the landscaping around those, the end twin homes there, adjacent to that pond, to provide a buffer, to help screen the facility or the, the second-floor level from those twin homes.
So how long would it take for those to reach maturity, to be a buffer at a third-story angle from that far away? That's pretty tall.
It depends on how big you plant them. If you plant a faster-growing maple, like autumn blaze maple or something, you'll get the nice color, and within eight to ten years, it'll be twenty to thirty feet high.
And with, if I might add, the, with that distance, because you're going all the way across Lot Two to get there, it doesn't take the same amount of angle to block at the edge of the property line to block a three-story window, a whole lot, you know, a larger block as would if we were at the same property.
Commissioner Nablock.
I have some comments to that. Annoying the area and the facility and the direction in which the homes are facing, and that this facility is facing a main thoroughfare of Main Street, I think we should not propose altering our standards for the city for our parking, which is, I think is, in my opinion, is very feasible at three-foot candle, that's why it's a standard for the city. And I don't think we should be debating for this candidate to reduce it to one, and I accommodate them for making accommodation, for adding additional trees, and that's very well welcomed as, as good faith in your application for this facility at this location. So I, 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 my comment or opinion to my fellow commissioners is that we should revisit the standard of three-foot candle for facility lighting at a different time and not place it upon an applicant at this point when they've been provided a three-foot candle and have, in good faith, provided what they presented to us today, so that's all I have to say on that.
Is there, your intention to have the interior lights for, say, the second and third stories be shining all night long, twenty-four hours?
The way I typically answer that is there is some portion of lighting in the building that has to be on as far as emergency lighting. So typically, there would be some, but typically, the, most of the building would be dark. It's on motion, motion, motion-sensing devices as you walk through the building. So after ten PM, the whole building is dark, except for the emergency lighting, and to some degree, the very front at this section where we probably have a little bit of lighting.
So you, you wouldn't necessarily have full hallway lighting on the second and third floors at, say, midnight?
No.
To see those bright yellow doors?
Correct.
And how locked in are you to that bright yellow for the color of the doors?
I have a funny story to back that up, but I would say, very locked into that yellow that has taken us, oh, the brothers have owned the business, it was Dad's business since starting in seventy-three, brothers took over in ninety-six, and we just went through a, a process in the last few years that has defined the exact pantone color, or refined it, I should say, to that color, so we're very locked into that specific yellow sea pantone color.
Mr. Chair.
And are you totally in agreement with our condition number ten about utilizing interior and exterior lighting using warm color temperatures not to exceed forty-one-hundred Kelvin Lumen output?
We are.
And who was it, Commissioner Haikla?
No, Mr. Chair, I was just going to mention, if you go down Coon Rapids Boulevard, we have a storage facility there, that's all orange. I drove by it, drove by it last night, and I guess you have to live with it, and it's, it is what it is. I personally think this is a, a nice-looking structure, and I think they have accommodated us as, or fellow commissioners says here, then, I think, you know, the added, the added landscaping and so forth, and so I, I will support the unit, I think it's a good, I'm not seeing any feedback or pushback from the neighborhood. That also, I was not real excited to hear and see about another storage facility, frankly, but when I see the unit and so forth, I would support it.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Nablock.
The U-Haul on Coon Rapids Boulevard, that is three stories as well?
Yes, so it's quite comparable, with the exception of the, it may be a larger footprint, and it's very orange, so as a basis for commissioners when they're thinking about their decision in this applicant's application, I just thought I'd put that framework picture forth.
Any other questions for petitioner at this time?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
So Mr. Harlecker, where were you detailing that extra landscaping? Can you bring a map up for that, just to, is, if the need is there to accommodate the lighting issue?
It would be in this area here.
Is that the bottom of the pond? Because that, your, your drawing is kind of like...
Yeah, that's, this is the, it would be right in this corner right in here. This is the pond.
Okay.
So it'd be right in here.
The corner there, yeah. Okay, thank you.
And they also have overstory trees here, and there might be a possibility to, you know, instead of planting the typical two-and-a-half-inch trees, maybe make those trees three or four inches in there.
As more of a screen. Okay.
And it would just be for those three trees.
Gotcha. And so when it comes to the yellow doors, your rendering has the little VW bug out front, same color. I don't know if U-Haul goes with that with their advertising, but maybe that's just a coincidence.
U-Haul goes with the big truck, orange truck.
Yeah.
Any other questions for petitioner? All right, thank you, we have more later. All right, at this time, I will open a public hearing in Planet Case nineteen-seven for the site plan and conditional use permit, self-storage at three-zero-two-one, one-hundred-twenty-fourth Avenue, Metro Storage. Anyone present wishing to speak to a public hearing? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. And Commissioner, your thoughts?
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Nablock.
I have a question from Mr. Harlecker. So is it in, in agreement with the applicant to add item eleven for additional overstory trees in the southeast quadrant by the basin? Is that part of the proposal?
At this point, it would be an added recommendation.
All right.
An added condition.
It really flows into, I think there was a, an engineering comment as well about, and you mentioned about planting more around the basin, so it really kind of falls in with that condition as well.
Yeah.
Number six. All right, thank you.
And anyone else with any comments? Anyone willing to make a motion?
So this requires a conditional use permit, is that right? We're gonna, and this is a permitted use? Am I correct on that?
Yeah, and Commissioner Casey, it's a conditional use, so the planning commission and I would be approving the conditional use permit as well as the site plan approval.
Okay. Well, I think, when I first saw this, I wasn't thrilled about it, you know, didn't light, light any fires, but it is, like Commissioner Haikla said, it is a, an attractive building, it's taking up just half of that space, which I think we could consider for Coon Rapids, kind of prime retail space. I think minimal traffic with this kind of business is a plus, so I guess I'm going to support it. Just not real enthusiastically, maybe.
And Commissioner, anyone willing to make a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Haikla.
In Planet Case nineteen-seven, I move approval of the, to go forward to move the, to approve of the proposed conditional use permit based on the finding that it complies with standards found in Section eleven-dash-three oh four-point-three, and approve the site plan with the stated ten conditions, and adding number eleven to add extra landscaping trees to the area of the storage pond, her water storage area.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Haikla, second by Nablock. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
So I, I will say that I'm not thrilled about a storage unit there, considering that the rest of it's all retail space, and it's generally commercial where customers are coming in and out from that, but it complies with everything we need to do, and, you know, I appreciate the fact that we're addressing some of the lighting. I can say that I've seen some of these units that haven't had those considerations that become a bright beacon, that are frankly, a little bit of an eyesore, and I would be hesitant to look at Lot Two if I were to be building a business there, if that was the case. But I appreciate the applicant's efforts to meet these requirements and to help be more of a, a partner with the city on this and its neighbors. And so because it meets the requirements and because it meets the codes as stipulated, I will have, I will be supporting this.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Nablock.
I support it as well, and I love the yellow.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? Motion carries. This is a decision by the planning commission and can be appealed to the city council within ten days if someone, anyone chooses to do so. Congratulations and good luck. Moving on to other business. Mr. Harlecker, you have anything?
Business. Our two new car dealerships are coming along, Honda and Chrysler. They haven't started demolition on the old facility, old Chrysler building, they'll be starting that soon. And the, the apartments up at North Star, those are coming along. You can tell, drive by, they're out of the ground now, and they're actually looking like apartment buildings.
Is there any news on a retail space there yet?
Not yet, Commissioner, no.
It'll be a coffee place, right?
For next month, we have the Port Evergreen Apartments. We'll be back with revised plans on their, planning on further reducing the number of units of the facility, and then we have a, a site plan for dimensional flexibility for the hospital. Their, their project is for stormwater management on the south side, the backside of their facility there, where they've got a pond. They've been working with the watershed district and the city engineering department to come up with a kind of innovative method for dealing with stormwater off the site. Everything's going to be underground now, and that pond area is going to be used for parking, and in order to accommodate that, they're requesting flexibility for impervious coverage and setbacks from one-hundred-and-fifteenth, so the commission will be considering those two items as well as the apartments next week, or next month.
Mr. Harlecker. Isn't there, like, an apartment complex right behind there? Or is that?
No, there's a single family behind there.
Okay.
It's down close to the river, so there's single-family houses.
All right.
That's on, on the south side. And the apartments are further, what I would call north, up towards Coon Rapids Boulevard.
Okay.
It's kind of hard when the street goes diagonally.
Kind of the, the west toward Anoka.
Yeah.
Those apartments, whatever.
It's the go-west-to-go-north plan.
Commissioner, anyone have anything for other business?
I do have a question for the commission as a whole, if they would be interested in having a workshop session at all to discuss meeting flow procedures and get to know each other a little bit, or any, have any opportunity with staff or feedback, just in general, as far as the items that are coming forward? as far as the items that are coming forward, if there's, or if there's interfacing with other commissions that we should do as part of an annual goal perspective, if anyone would be interested in that? Not seeking an official motion, just putting it out there for discussion.
Are you talking a, a workshop for business, or just a drop-in, get-to-know-you kind of thing?
Just to get to know us a little bit and also make sure we understand, you know, our general flow and what we would like to have done, or if there's any goals or accomplishments with, that the chair would like to have, or anything we'd like to talk, if we would like to maybe plan any meetings with any other commissions, say Sustainability or Council or anything like that, or if we have any improvement requests for staff, if we're struggling with things, just in general, that would be, could talk about in a meeting group versus just one-on-one through emails, just in general, is my thoughts.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Nablock.
In, in the answer to that recommendation, I think that's something that should be one-on-one aside directed to Mr., to Chair Schwartz, as I think he is, has tremendous experience as chairing this planning, he's blushing, look at him, about coordinating that proposal with Chair Schwartz, and as an aside, Mr. Harlecker, as they're our two largest resources in experience, and I think they would, they would help facilitate and meet out that proposal that you're, that is, is a good idea to present before the commission as a whole gets a chance to decide on it, so.
Anyone else with anything? Otherwise, meeting or a motion to adjourn?
I make the motion to adjourn.
I second it.
Motion by Casey, second by Nablock. Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Meeting's adjourned.